Tell the auditor that we ate up this time.
He's not back on.
Okay.
We will call to order the regular Board of Education meeting for the Tecumseh Public Schools for September 28, 2020. We apologize for the delay. We have a technical problem. We are underway at 7:20 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Tim Simpson. I am strictly with the group camera up there.
I can barely hear him.
The live feed is just showing your name currently.
He's catching up?
Now we got Suzanne standing for the pledge and there's John standing for the pledge.
All right, the livestream is catching up then. First item is the swearing in and oath of office for Dr. Ed Schritt, who is not here yet. That was expected. He already did legally and officially swear in at the board office.
Right, we had a swearing in at the office last week because we wanted to begin sending him district communications. So that was taking place by Terry and I. He apologized for not being here tonight. He had a prior commitment through church and will be here regularly until the end of the term and may still make it to a portion of tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Rick. Good news, we have a new team member introduction. Rick?
We do. I'm going to pass along the pleasure of the introduction to Kelly. It's a member of her department.
Yeah, so I'm pleased to introduce to the board Amanda Aldrich. She's our Human Resources Director for Tecumseh Public Schools. Amanda most recently comes from us from Wasna County Sheriff's Office where she was a part of the Human Resources Department. But I'll let Amanda say a few words. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, everybody. How is everybody? I'm really excited to be a part of the team and I'm hoping that we can continue working towards making things wonderful for the kids in Tecumseh.
Thank you very much. It's good to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Suzanne's indicating that she's having trouble hearing.
It did just get louder.
We'll let Devon adjust the gain here.
Can you hear me?
We'll move on to public comment on agenda items only. We did not have any registrants for the public comment, which brings us to revisions and approval of the agenda. Do we have any revisions? Or could I get any motion to approve the agenda as written, please?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second that. Roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Suzanne? Unmute Suzanne.
Okay, I'm unmuted, I think. Aye.
Thank you. Becky?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The agenda is approved as written. At this time, I have to depart the meeting. I'm going to turn the chair over to Vice President Brooks.
All right, that will take us into scheduled reports. And the first one is the Finance Committee meeting of today chaired by myself. And we have Jim from the district audit presentation to give us what's going on with our audit.
Good evening. My name is Jim Fred. I'm with Mayor Castaroson. We're the auditors for the district. Just went through with the Finance Committee in more detail than I'm going to go through here, the results of the audit this year. I'm going to just hit a few highlights of the audit and happy to take questions at any point. I'm going to just refer to the bound audit report that I believe you have all received. And again, just hit a few highlights. And where I'm going to start in that report is on page one, which is the independent auditors' report. So one thing we always like to go over when we're doing the audit report is to let everybody know what the exact audit, the objective of the audit is, which is to express an opinion on the financial statements. The audit is not to detect fraud or to give an opinion on internal control. It is to express an opinion on the financial statements. And the management's responsibility for the financial statements, which is the second paragraph on page one of the audit, independent auditors' report, is management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. The auditor's responsibility is to express opinions on the financial statements based on the audit that we do. And our opinion is that, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above in all material respects do present fairly the financial position of the district and the governmental activities each major fund and all the aggregate remaining fund information as of June 30. So that is an unmodified, it's a clean opinion, it's the best opinion you can get. It's what the Department of Education wants to see, means everything is in accordance with your generally accepted accounting principles. So I'm going to skip forward now in the audit report to page 13, which is the balance sheet for governmental funds. So this schedule is a snapshot of one moment in time as of June 30, 2020, of the governmental fund financial statements. And these statements are presented on a modified accrual basis of accounting. This is the budgetary basis that you're used to seeing when you're doing your budgets through the year. And I'm going to focus just on the fund balance number, which is near the bottom of the page. Your total fund balance is just over $5 million in the general fund. And of that $5 million, about 4.67 million is unassigned and therefore available for future spending. And what we like to do is, one indices we look at is how that unassigned fund balance compares to your annual expenditures. And we put that in a percentage basis. Your unassigned fund balance this year is about 17.3% of your annual operating expenditures. This is an increase from last year. Last year you were at 15.6%. What we would typically recommend is a minimum of 15 to 20% of operating expenditures as a goal. And if you think about that, 15 to 20% is about a two to three month time window of basically of having funds available for two to three months spending on hand as of June 30. Going to go ahead and move forward now a couple of pages in the report to page 15. And this is your statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance for the year. So this is your activity for the year. And again, I'm just going to hit a few highlights and just focus on the general fund. You had total revenues for the year of $27.2 million, which is down about $779,000 from last year, or about 2.8% decrease in revenues. You had an enrollment decrease of about 100 students. And also, although originally at the beginning of the year, there was supposed to be a $240 increase in the foundation allowance at the state that ended up being taken back due to the COVID situation. So between those two areas, that would be the reason for the decrease in your revenues. On the other side of things, on your total expenditures, you were able to reduce your total expenditures as compared to last year by about $1.6 million. Your total expenditures for the year was $26.6 million. And the two areas with the biggest decrease compared to last year were, in your operations and maintenance area, your decrease was about $600,000 compared to last year. And in the basic programs area, about $450,000. So revenues less expenditures, if you're going down to the bottom of page 15, you get a net change in fund balance number for this year was $266,790. And added to your beginning fund balance number of 4.7 million, that gets you to your ending fund balance number, which again was just a hair over $5 million.
Jim, when did the state take away the $240 increase last year?
It actually didn't happen until after June 30. So your monthly state aid payments, the last two of them come in July and August for the 2019-2020 school year. So I believe the deduction actually happened on your August state aid report.
Okay.
Okay, so we look at, what, a five-year trend of revenues, expenses, and fund balance. And actually, I, let's see if I can have the I have a couple graphs here that you don't have in that bound report, but I can just go over them verbally. Your five-year trend of fund balance, in the last five years, three of the five years you have had an increase in your fund balance through the year. And then the other two of the five years, you've had a decrease. And on a trend basis, your fund balance is almost flat over those five years, as far as where your ending fund balance is. And really, it's been pretty steady through those five years. Haven't been a lot of big increases or decreases, which is positive for your budgeting when you're looking at doing your budgets each year. And then just to touch on, again, in the general fund, about 87% of your total revenues in your general fund come from the state sources. About 12% are local sources for property taxes. And then only about 1% of your general fund is federal dollars. And then on the expenditure side in the general fund this year, of all the expenditures that you have, about 62% of those were in the instruction category versus supporting services. And supporting services, you had about 35%. Typically, last year you were at 59% instruction. So you're able to, of all the dollars you spent in your general fund, a little bit higher percentage was able to go toward instruction. Typically, we see instruction expenses in the range of 55 to 65%. So you're at 62%. And then lastly, the district had total federal dollars spent this year of about $1.1 million. Anything over $750,000 triggers a single audit, which is essentially more audit procedures to look at the, all the strings attached to those federal awards. The district, because they haven't had, because you haven't had any findings in the past, you are considered to be a low-risk auditee. So for low-risk auditees, we have to audit at least 20% of those dollars. And as it turns out, this year, the food service program made up the vast majority of your expenditures, about $900,000 of that 1.1 million were in your food service program. So that is the program that we looked at this year as far as the additional procedures for the single audit. And happy to report that for both the federal awards program, for the food service program, and also for the financial statements, we had no findings whatsoever. Everything was clean. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Now I'm muted. Okay, if there's no questions, we'll move on.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate you joining us this evening, or two meetings.
Thank you.
So that brings us to discussion items. In discussion items, the Policy Committee meeting of September 24th discussed the 5,000 policies students and 6,000 policies finance. And Suzanne, do you have more to add for that?
Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, basically, there was just a lot of reviews with the 5,000 and the 6,000 series. Rick can probably speak better on it. Most of them were moves that were recommended to us, policies we already had that just had, needed to be updated. A lot of them were, you know, issued by law, so we had to adopt them. And there was one change Rick was looking into, and I'll let him talk about that.
Right. So the 5,000 and 6,000 series, like Suzanne mentioned, most of the language that's being presented tonight is in there either as a result of new language, things that should be in our policy manual but have not been, or are required by law to be in our policy manual. So there are some choices there that customize it to the way that we actually do things. But there weren't a lot of options in terms of whether or not the policy is in or out. It's in 5,000 and 6,000, having to do with students and the finance. Those are pretty straightforward updates. So everybody has their sign-in capability and take a look at the edits. Until it's approved, you will see any deletions in red with striking lines through the language, and any additions in green print, or there'll be green Xs where options were available for choice. So just urge the members to take a look at that. Get a good cup of coffee. It's not real lively reading, but read through that information. And if you have any questions about the selections or the deletions, I'm going to forward those to myself or to President Johnson before this becomes action item at the next meeting.
Okay. Next in discussion items, we have an anonymous donation of $50 for food donations.
Right, from time to time, we'll get donations from community members. Typically, it's made to pay off any negative balances for lunches and things like that. So just urge the board to accept this with our gratitude.
Absolutely. Next discussion item is Lenawee County Association of School Boards, the LCASB, Appointment of Representative. So Mike McNamara had been our representative. He has resigned. They just met on the 24th, so it'll be another three months before there is a meeting. I was hoping Milt would be with us tonight and see if that would be something he would be interested in doing.
Yes, it's on there as a discussion item because it came to our attention that Mike was that standing member. And like you said, the next meeting is not for a few months, but between now and then, we will have to have an appointment from the board so that the district is represented at the county level.
Do any members that are in attendance want to fill that spot? Okay. We do have it on an action item. We can certainly nominate Milt. And if that is something he is not interested in doing, then we can look further. We can talk about that when we get into action, I suppose. So the next discussion item is the Lenawee County Ten Year Plan for Career and Technical Education Programming. We have some handouts on that. If anybody had a chance to look through it, I'm sure Mr. Hubblely can add to that.
Yeah, these documents go along with the state's Top 10 and 10 Plan. And this is just a review of where the county is right now with their CTE programming and where they hope to be into the future. Districts in the ISD need to have board approval of the plan so that they can have it as part of their planning.
I had a chance to review it, and I love it. I love it. It was an amazing opportunity.
Yeah, it's very good stuff. We recommend approval. And again, it's a discussion item tonight. You'll have a couple of weeks to review and ask any questions. And then it'll be up for action at our next meeting.
So that will take us to our action items. Suzanne? So that will take us to our action items. Suzanne?
I would like to make a motion. I hereby move to approve the Extended Notionality of Learning Plan as presented and directed in direct administration to submit said plan to the Lenawee ISD by October 1, 2020, as required.
We get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, then we will roll call. Suzanne?
Suzanne?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I also will vote aye. The next action item will be the Lenawee County Association of School Boards, LCASB, Appointment of Representative.
LCASB, Appointment of Representative.
Should we make them, should we move this to discussion items at the next meeting? Or shall we try to appoint Milt? Or maybe Tim?
I'd make a motion to move it to the next meeting while we got a full board here. Maybe there's some other people that are interested. So the meeting's not for another three months.
Right.
Right, there'll be another one in December, I think.
Okay.
So Tim has made a motion. I will second that.
I will second that.
And Suzanne?
Suzanne?
Roll call.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I also will vote aye.
Aye.
That will take us to the acceptance of the anonymous donation.
Suzanne?
I hereby move to accept with thanks the $50 anonymous donation, of which will go towards food donations at Tecumseh Schools.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Will you adjust the feedback there?
Okay, then roll call Suzanne.
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I also will vote aye.
And aye.
And add that thanks again as well. And that will take us to the consent agenda. Suzanne?
I hereby, I hereby move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the following items. Minutes from the regular board meeting of September 14, 2020, minutes from the Policy Committee meeting of September 24, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. And roll call vote. Suzanne?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. That will take us to the superintendent's report. Mr. Hubblely?
Okay, the last meeting, the board talked about an update on the central office building, the administrative building over on Shawnee, which we have moved out of. And currently, there are no full-time inhabitants of the building. We do have maintenance people who come and go from there on a regular basis because we have some items stored there. We have the competitive cheer and sideline cheer who use that as a workout facility. So it is somewhat inhabited, which is a good thing. And I say that because shortly after our last meeting, I communicated with the city of Tecumseh. And we had a conversation about whether or not it might be worth reaching out again to the two developers who were originally interested in the property. I shouldn't say originally, most recently interested in the property. So that communication was made. And within a couple of days, we had meetings with both of those people. And both of those groups are interested in getting involved again. They have to wait for, twice a year, they, in their industry, they have dates when they can go out for competitive grants. And the next cycle for those grant proposals is in February. And they feel that the property scores on whatever scoring mechanism that they use, that that property scores very well. And both groups are confident that they could receive one of those grants for funding. So I think that there will be at least one, if not two, offers on the property. But it will be contingent on whatever organization that receives an approval to being awarded one of those grants. So it's a timely process because it is, I think, February and October are their dates. And this year, there's only going to be one, and it's in February. Because there's only going to be one, there'll be an expanded number of grants awarded. That, along with the fact that the property That along with the fact that the property scores well for the usage that they're looking at, which is low-cost assisted living. For seniors. So we're we're very happy that the we've been working with the city in renewing those relationships. I've had conversations with. The presidents of both of those organizations and and I. I'm assured we we talked about maybe the city giving an update, but that's the update. The update is that they've been working with us to renew those relationships and. I think we've got things headed in a good direction to have that project become renewed and have that building roll off of. Our responsibility. And I think even better than that, that the property will end up being. Returned to the community with something of value. That enhances living here in Tecumseh. So those are both good things. The next item is athletic transportation. You wanted a verification that that has been restored. We went back and we looked at the budget. Specific budget cut items from the June approval of the budget. And athletic transportation was a specific item identified as being removed from the budget. That's it was in addition to their 20% reduction in their overall budget budget. So. I assured. Mr. Zajak that we would. Install athletic transportation into the 2021 budget and that. Any revenue enhancement that he needed to do or fundraising. Or or charging parents for transportation needed to stop. So we've. Move forward with funding athletic transportation. Starting in the fall, but continuing throughout the school year.
And that's for all teams?
All teams. Correct.
I know some of them are clubs and so forth. I mean. You know, some of the sports are clubs. Those are going to be included as too.
Right.
Okay, alright.
COVID protocols, there's a few things I want to mention. We did have two more cases come to our attention today. Bringing the total to four positive cases. So far, all the positive cases have been students. Today, the two cases. Came to our attention just a little bit after lunchtime, so we had to run our. Cross check on closed contacts rather quickly. Double checked it, verified it with the health department and. Then began the process of communicating with parents. It's been my direction for all the administrators. That we're going to have voice-to-voice conversations with parents of students who have to be in quarantine. So we like to take the time to have those conversations, which, you know, if we if we sent out a robo-call, you know, you could save some time, but that's not information that's really appropriate for a robo-call. So we have those. One-to-one conversations. Once that communication is done, of course, the full-time, we keep you, the board notified of what's going on. The administration is notified. In real time. And then, once we've had all the communication with the affected students. Then I will communicate to the other employees in the district. And then, as we did today, send out a an alert to the rest of our families notifying them. That there's been more positive cases. When we don't have to, we don't identify the school or the grade level or specific classrooms. It's our. It's our focus to try to. Stay away from any identifying. Information that may isolate who the cases are or who the quarantine individuals might be. So that's been, I think, it's taken some getting used to from our families, but you know, this is all new and and I think that people are. Are beginning to understand the protections that are in place in terms of people's health information and privacy and things like that. So. We've had some time to go through these things and every time we have a case. We learn a little bit more about what we things to do and and things not to do. And hopefully getting better at our communication protocols and things like that. Just. Really appreciate the way that the community has been supporting us by and large. You know, there there have been some frustrations at times, but but in general, our families, I think, are supportive of. How we go about things. Two new pieces of information on Friday, a new executive order. Was made by the governor stating that all students K-12 will ma wear masks in person all day. Previously, our return to school roadmap plan. Only required ma masks five through 12. In our in our K-4 learners have only. Been wearing masks under certain circumstances. So I added that to our family phone call on Sunday night, just to kind of give that information to begin to prep your younger. Children that mask requirements are in place K-12 now, starting next Monday, October. 5th. Also, in that executive order. There was some loosening up of. Large group venue. Numbers. And I talked with our school law firm today to find out if they're going to have guidance. To see if that also includes schools, both indoor and outdoor sports venues. Right now. The MHSAA has directed that sports teams can only include two tickets per athlete. But that wouldn't be comparable to the new executive. Order. However, the new executive order does not call out schools. It it talks about public venues. So. Not sure. We we hope to have some guidance tomorrow or Wednesday because we have a home football game this week, and I think that would make. A difference, certainly in attendance or the ability to have attendance. Another thing that goes along with that. Is that there has been some loosening of the language for. High school bans. And in that language could also include the bands' attendance at those events and their families. So. We're waiting to get exact direction from either our professional organizations or. The legal teams who who deal with this stuff. And and if we can have that information to parents before Friday's home game. We'll get that information out. So. The the only thing, the other thing that I would say about it, the item that you passed tonight, the extended continuity of learning plan. Means that the clock will be running every 30 days or every month. You will get a report on certain things. You'll get the assurance that we have done some pre-testing. We've already set some goals in the plan for achievement, and then we will do post-testing and make reports. On the date benchmarks that are mentioned in that plan. You'll also get a monthly update of running contacts. For attendance and whether or not we are falling in the percentages. That is called out by the plan. So. That that's not a piece of paper that will sit on the shelf. Each month, the board will be asked to. Renew that plan based on the reports that should be given on a monthly basis. So. Up to nine times between now and the end of the school year, you'll be asked to. Take a look at that plan again. And if we've made any changes, we'll make you aware of what those changes are.
Okay. Devon, I see it's muted now. I don't need this one unmuted. Is that correct? Okay, just to make sure. Alright, so just real quick, I I know I've told you in person, but I'll tell you in this format as well. I think you've done a great job handling. It's unfortunate that we had any cases, but that we did and we were able to notify the family so quickly and. The process worked. It worked as it was designed to. And kudos to you for that.
It has been. Thank you. These aren't skills that we want to be good at. But I I know that our parents do appreciate. Timely and appropriate communication. So our group has been doing a nice job.
And with those loosen protocols, would that affect the school board meetings?
Yes, I think it potentially could. I think that it could maybe free us up to have. An in-person gallery and and return a little bit to normal.
Yeah, slightly less technical difficulties.
Yeah.
Okay, so that takes us to items scheduled for next agenda, which would be October 12th. We don't know exactly the format that'll be in yet at this time, apparently. That will include good news. Looks like we've got introduction of a payroll supervisor.
Right, we should have a new person on board to introduce at that time.
That's exciting. Discussion items will be transportation update with Mr. Newsom and budget revision with the budget committee meeting. Action items, looks like it'll be 2019, 2020 district audit, those 5,000, 6,000 policies that we discussed. And the resolution for the Lenaway County Career and Technical Education 10-year plan concept and goal. It looks like we've got some finance committee meetings that will approve as well. And that takes us to our next public comment. We did not have anyone register for that. So that will take us to board comment and discussion.
Um, have we heard anything from the state about? Student pupil counting or how they're going to do that? Are we using the numbers from last year? Because then I also read something if you have an increase, they're going to give you. An allowance for that or or so how you know how that's working?
Yeah, they still the the language says that there will be a blend, that it'll be based 75% on your count from last year.
Okay.
And. It's 25% on this year's count. So. That'll be left up to Kelly to to figure out exactly how that how that goes. It'll be complicated and it's a number we won't know exactly. Until we get to the February count.
So we don't, we won't know our student count until February?
We won't know. Well, we won't know the blend. We're going to know our current FTE. Here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So we'll have a target to to aim for. But it'll be 25% accounting of. The fall count and the spring count.
I saw they might do that, or they might keep it the way it is and then give you if you have an increase. From what I saw. So they were talking two different ways they might do it. So.
Yeah, there was some increased language in there about. You know, districts who have an increase in their enrollment. I don't know exactly how that tabulates.
Right, so Rick's correct. How the state's counting pupils this year is they're calling it a super blend. And and Rick's absolutely correct. So it's 75% of your students that you counted last year.
In the fall count?
In the, no. So if you if you recall, schools have two counts. They have a fall count and they have a February count. And how the book, the general blend on a normal school year, the blend would be 90% counted from the fall. And 10% from the prior sprint. Okay, that's still occurring. So they take that blended 90-10 number from last year and you get 75% of that. And you take that same 90-10 blend from this year and we get 25% of that number. And that's why they're calling it a super blend. So, yeah, it's a it's a little complicated this year.
How can we make it more complicated? I know.
Yeah, that's what it should be, the super complicated.
And you're right, there there was some additional language for those school districts that had increasing enrollment. They could get a a certain. Dollar amount based on those number of students, but it wasn't counted in the super blend count. It was an additional funding line item.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else? Alright, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you.
Support. In my.
Aye.
Support. Aye.
That will bring us to a close. I don't have a time, so. Thank you.